Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectmen's Meeting for April 25th, 2016. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag. Approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I had moved that we approved the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded. All in favor? And before we do, Department Head Committee Chair updates, I guess we have a check presentation. And the Town of Acton is donating $500 to the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association, PO Box 583, Springvale, Maine. And I think we have somebody here that wants to receive it from us. Did you bring your camera?
I got a picture?
Yeah. Yep.
We like all of those who support us.
Why don't you give it to Jen and if you want to come back here? Or we can come up there. Everybody without the chairs, come on.
And I can go home and have dinner.
What do we have? Can I come with you?
Chicken, rice and broccoli. With cheese.
We went through this last night, remember I said it was on your phone? Okay, good, got it.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. We again came in the first memorial on May...
Could you come over here so people can hear you?
Okay. On May 21st at 2:00 in the afternoon, we're dedicating a memorial that we built. And we raised $15,000. And what we have on the memorial is the first time that the Merchant Marines are being recognized in the cemetery.
Oh, wow.
And this is to all of those who served. So if anybody would like to come up, at 2:00 we'll be starting, so be there before 2:00 on Saturday, the 21st of May. And then also, at 2:00 on the 30th of May, we will be having our Memorial Day ceremony.
Alright.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. Alright, Department Head Committee Chair updates, Warrant and Finance Committee.
Good evening. So, Larissa Crockett, Chair of the Warrant and Finance. We met last night. It was a brief meeting because not, we have not had a finalized warrant. So we have discussed the warrant items that have been before us, and we have not made any recommendations. The committee wishes to wait until we have a finalized warrant to make those recommendations. So we have a tentative meeting scheduled for next Monday, May 2nd, at 6:00. If the Board chooses tonight to finalize a warrant, if the Board does not choose to finalize a warrant this evening, then we are scheduled to meet on May 9th.
We don't have the school articles yet, right? So we wouldn't be finalized in that time?
Sure. The Warrant and Finance Committee meeting then will be May 9th at 6:00 PM here at the Town Hall. We are making a good faith effort to finish up our work in the timeline that was provided to us, but that of course will be dependent on when we have a finalized warrant. Okay? Any questions? Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Planning Board, 4.2.2.6. Who's coming up with that?
Well, I can, in your absence, and I did, I did try to, I did fill Ted in, but the Selectmen gave me a direction last week that after hearing from the Planning Board Chair, they authorized me to contact Maine Municipal, and from what I understood, the question was, based on the public hearing, how it was advertised for the 4.22A, could they add another warrant or make changes to B based on how the original public hearing was posted in regards to how our ordinance requires that we lay it out? I had a lengthy conversation with Maine Municipal, and she in fact said yes. If the Board so chose, they could put another article or make changes to either version of 4.226 based on how the public hearing notice was printed.
Okay, so, I saw the video, and assuming you guys didn't want to vote last week?
We didn't vote on it last week. We all, we needed to get that question answered and, you know, just to kind of mull it over and whatnot, so.
In fact, if you had seen the video, I guess, then there's, you know, not much need to go back over the wording of what I had to say, you know, essentially looking to give the townspeople the opportunity to vote on both A and B and clear up the confusion. That seemed to be all over the place at the last town meeting back in November.
Right. Well, I've got a couple of concerns. One is, we made a policy that we would not take any warrant articles after January 31st, and we've been doing that for five years now. And we just saw what happened with the combining the two committees, how long it took for us to get all the information, and then get it to the Warrant and Finance. So, we have not for five years allowed anybody to come in after the end of January. Now, I saw on the video, something was mentioned about the school. Well, a school warrant is completely different because the Selectmen have no power over the school warrant. We cannot turn down their warrant articles. There's actually a Supreme Court decision that if Selectmen turn down the school board's warrant articles and don't put them on the town floor, then they can be held responsible for paying those fees. And I don't know about you guys, but I don't have $60,000 to pay for a new foreign language teacher or $170,000 that they're talking about putting forward. So, they have their own warrant, even though it goes on the Selectmen's warrants, the Selectmen can never change what the school board puts for. And we don't even make recommendations on it. The school board does, and the Warrant and Finance does. So that's the reason the school board ones are going on. But, you know, we've had other people come in late, and from my understanding, talking to Ken today, you folks had this conversation before January 31st and decided and voted unanimously to put just the one question forward. And from what I saw from the Planning Board meeting, I mean, hearing, and in what I saw in the Selectmen's video, I don't see there's any change from the town. I mean, you had four people there, and they all spoke at town meeting, and so there's no change. They're still against both articles being in there. The other thing is, is the one that we're trying to leave on was voted unanimously by the Planning Board to put it on zoning. And I would have a concern about not having another public hearing about this, so, because nothing was discussed about why all this came. It was just discussed about polluting the water and all that kind of stuff. Nobody talked about why we did this, why we asked the Planning Board to do this, and then when they didn't do it, we did it on our own. So none of that was discussed. So it's been three years since we've been working on that. So I think it's important for people to understand why that's on there, because it does take land out of tax value. It doesn't take away power from the Planning Board. As Kenny told me, and he said that he told you folks, you can still put all the restrictions you want on it, but we don't get, we don't have to take it out of the tax base. That thousand acres, we'd have to go from 300 an acre tax down to $100 an acre tax if we don't allow them the opportunity to come and get a permit and to go and see you guys, and then maybe even go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. But the way it's read, the way it was written in 2011, that takes those rights away. Now, the Selectmen, I remind you guys, we even had meetings in the back room with several lot owners that were concerned because they went to get a permit, and they had bought land many years ago, and couldn't get a permit anymore. So that's why we put that in. And it's a very small thing, and it's not even lakefront land. It's on the other side of town that we're talking about, if we had the maps here still. So my vote, well, we'll have to make a motion and everything, but I will vote against putting that on the warrant this year, and I like Paul Poyn's talk last week. There's absolutely no reason that it's in a hurry. It's already been on for over a year. There's no reason for it to be a hurry, so let's go through this one. Let's not violate, void our normal way of doing the warrant, because there are other people that had articles that we told them no already. So I don't want to, you know, violate that rule that we had.
May I ask a question of Jennifer?
Absolutely.
Did we talk a week ago about the idea that there was other instances beside the school board that questions came up and were changed in the warrant after the January deadline?
The conversation that we had last week was regarding the school. Correct me, Ed, if I'm wrong, but it wasn't that, those were the articles that came after the date?
Every other article we have, every article we have, and the school still hasn't given them to us yet. Every other article we have came to us before January 31st. And that gave us all this time to get it done and get it onto Warrant and Finance.
If you're referring to the combination of the forest and conservation, for example, they still came before the board, before the January 1st, and by getting that in there, they, they allowed them to do the research and have the question, I mean, they knew a question was going in, they just didn't know the wording of the question.
So we had to turn that over to the attorneys, and we needed that time to do it in order to fill the whole process. Because the first time, the first year we were here, we had eight different warrants between April and May trying to meet the deadline, because everybody kept coming in, and a lot of the articles that people were putting in were completely illegal, so we couldn't put them in. And we finally got a warrant. And that, there's no sense in doing that, we're not getting good research and good assistance from the attorneys, and it makes the staff here have to do double the work than it takes for Warrant and Finance, and it also, you know, getting Warrant and Finance prepared. And it also cuts down the time that Warrant and Finance gets to go over the warrant. So it's worked very well for five years, so I would vote against breaking that and putting anything on this year.
I see, I see this one as just an extension of the 4.226 warrant article that we have. I mean, it's just, it's just another section of that same, yes, it's going to be a separate warrant article, but it's still a part of what we already have a slot allotted for. So I personally don't see a problem. I, what I'm hoping would happen is we get this thing moving forward, these two get voted out, we go back to 2011, and then look at it after that fact. You know, have the Planning Board take another look at it, and take your time, work your way through it, see if there's something you want to tweak in there. But get it back to a status quo, and then let's move forward again. So, I don't have an issue with putting that warrant article on, because I think it's already part of what we already got in there.
Well, my problem is, is I wouldn't have voted to put it on if, which doesn't mean it wouldn't go on. I wouldn't have voted to put this on in January if they had come to us with both of them. Because I feel that the town has talked about, you know, has spoken about what they want. I mean, they voted both of them in the first time, and then, then we made it so one of them would get left in because of the vote that came from the ballot. I mean, the ballot, compared to 20, was it 35 people that came to the town meeting, and we had 600 that came to the, to the vote, so...
And you feel that there was no confusion revolving around either one of those situations?
The ballot?
Yeah.
The ballot in June? No, absolutely not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis. But my question, he said...
With the ballot, no. The questions were out, they were advertised way ahead of time, and people had the opportunity to see them. You had, I think, I believe, two public hearings, and people had the opportunity to come in and question it. I don't, I don't think it was wrong there.
It was also our understanding that what we put forward for the warrant would be subject to results of the public hearing, and that you guys were acceptable to that idea. And upon the end of that public hearing, granted admittedly that there were not a lot of people there, but the fact that the way that went made us maybe realize that we need to let the people themselves make the decisions as opposed to us as the Planning Board making that decision, and then coming forward to you. And that was the basis for us coming back last week with the idea of going with a choice in the warrant of A and B separately and letting the people make the decision.
Well, why didn't you put this forward in January, when you were having discussions about it?
We were waiting for the public hearing.
The public hearing for what?
For the first part of the whole deal. I mean, we, just because we changed our minds shouldn't impact how you are making a decision on how...
I'm not making a decision, I'm just telling you what my vote is. You know, there's two other Selectmen and they can vote however they want, but I'm telling you how I feel about it, and now it's up to them. And I wasn't here last week, so I'm glad you were willing to come up and talk about it again. But if I had known both of them were going to come forward in January, I would have voted against it then, is my opinion. And, and I don't, it's worked really well to not have people come in in, you know, March and April and say, "I want this warrant article on there," because the process we have to go through. You're saying it's no different than the other one, but it is, because I don't think the public hearing, I mean, people saw what was in the, you know, in the notice, saying that we're going to take both of them out. Maybe we'd have gotten the turnout that we got at the past public hearings instead of four people. But they knew that we were taking the illegal one out. So you've changed what you've told the people at a public hearing, even though the wording is okay and the lawyer says, "Yeah, you can do it," but I think that's confusing.
Jennifer, can you read the post, please?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you that it did not...
If you'd like to come on?
I can do him an answer to that?
Hmm?
Do you want me to answer that, or...
Do we have a copy of the posting? I don't believe it said anything about Section A, the illegal one, being taken out.
I don't have it in front of me, but it did not mention A or B.
Right.
It just mentioned the 4.226, Resource Protection.
Alright.
Which this is all still part of.
Paul Poyn, just as a point of clarity as to, you know, my perspective at the public hearing, what I pointed out is that, you know, and understanding from my, from my position on warrant and finance for a few years back, that, you know, I understand that we're reluctant to make changes late in the game, and this is most assuredly late in the game. And my perspective was that, you know, for the point of, for the sake of clarity on Option A on 4.226, which is clearly illegal, we want to get rid of it, for the point of clarity of just kind of keeping that uncomplicated, and allowing that to go forward and assuredly getting that deleted from our ordinance so that we won't have to deal with it anymore. As far as B, you know, it's, it's not legally problematic. We could potentially, if the town body wills it, that we could, and the Selectmen are willing to consider it, we can think, you know, think about that at a future town meeting. And that was kind of what my perspective is. And I would like to add, since I'm here in front of the Selectmen, that if the Selectmen choose to not have that option, that extra article here to remove B as well, I'd like some general statement about willingness to consider that at it for a future town meeting, and if so, how those of the town body who would like to see that move forward, how they would go about doing that, how they would, you know, how they would get that in front of the Selectmen for a future town meeting. Well, I think the Pla, I think the Planning Board can make that decision to come and ask us if they want it on the next special town meeting or the next town meeting. And, you know, if they come in with the deadline, I would have no problem with doing that. But, you know, we would, we, I don't, I don't think I would call a special town meeting just to ask that question. It would have to go on an agenda with something else that we had to have. And as you know, every year we end up with a special town meeting, so I'm sure, you know, it can get on there. So I'd be more than willing to do that, but... Okay. So if there's some momentum to do it, and that was certainly my impression last November, that I think part of the issue was that there was this real stubbornness to get rid of both of them, and that's why we had that very strange vote that we had, and nothing got done. So I think that it's, it is out there. I'm certainly not going to spearhead that myself, but, you know, I would like to at least get some clarity as to if there are those who would like to see that move forward, how they would go about it, and I think you've just answered that question. Thank you. Hang on a minute. Nope. Could you come back up for a minute? I'm going to ask you something about zoning. About Claire. Somebody want to come up from the Planning Board that want to talk about Claire? Yeah, that'd be great if you would. As everybody knows, somebody ran into Claire Bragg's house Saturday night, and it was great, there was like 75 people over there yesterday cleaning up and everything else. And Bill and I were over there, and they were trying to get it closed up because of the storm coming in. Well, I offered to go and start the building permit process for them to repair the front of the building. It's wide open to, you know, and they had a lot of damage inside. But the actual building that's going to have to be fixed is just the front of the building, and then they want to extend the porch a little bit, because they couldn't get a wheelchair in together because the porch was six feet by six feet, and they need six feet by eight feet in order to swing a chair, and they want to change the door. My concern is, when I went downstairs with Claire's signature on there and went down, they had gone and closed it up and put some insulation in because they turned the heat on and everything. And then, when they pull up permanent, it requires all the zoning. And I was wondering if it's possible, if you folks could start thinking about, when it comes to an emergency, whether it be a fire, or hopefully nobody, anybody running through a house again, that that would be a special circumstances where they could work on their house right away, and, you know, just keep in touch with code enforcement, but not, you know, be told that all of a sudden now you've got to rewire the house with all brand-new smoke detectors, and because you, once you get a building permit, you have to come up to the new code, and, well, come to find out after talking to Kenny some more, that they don't have to do that, they can buy the plug-in ones. But it caused a lot of, probably anguish after, you know, what happened this weekend. So if there was something that we could do to have some kind of an emergency permit that says, "Yes, you can fix your house, you can make sure it doesn't fall in anymore, and you can protect it from the weather, you can have an electrician turn your heat back on, and, and, you know, we'll still come and inspect it," but to go through the whole permit process, because that's all they did, was they put the wall back on, they put a little insulation in, and they had the electrician hook the wires back up that were ripped off by the, by the truck. And they had the plumber come in and hooked up the hot water heat that had got ripped out by the truck, so that the house wouldn't freeze up and she'd lose all, all the pipes. Now, it's settled now, you know, they're, they're okay to go forward with it, but there should be some kind of an emergency thing where it's okay for them to just go fix it, and Kenny can go in and look at it, is all I'm suggesting.
So I guess I'm, I'm hearing that you're asking me to put it on our next agenda?
Well, I'm just asking if you folks would talk about it, take a look at it. And it's a perfect example, because, you know, I don't know how, how it goes with, with fire. I mean, you know, but to take a house as old as that, and all they want to do, because it is an old house that stood up even with the truck driving right into the kitchen, there isn't a lot of repairs, so I don't think it's fair to have to make them, because the insurance company's not going to make them up, pay to update that. Insurance is only going to pay for exactly what the damage is. So I would think that we should have some kind of permit or temporary permit or something in there that allows people to, you know, fix their house before they have to go through the whole permitting process, and, you know, with what goes on as far as, you know, all the, all the building permits that are going on and everything, you know, I mean, we can move it to the front, but, and, which is what I think Kenny did, so they're, they're okay to go. But, you know, the electrician came in, fixed the wiring, and couldn't get a permit because I hadn't brought Claire's signature in yesterday, yet, and Kenny wasn't here yesterday. So, I just, I think it's a good idea to have something for an emergency that says, "Yes, go ahead and fix your house, and we'll come and look at it later."
Well, I, well, I could tell you this, but I'm not totally familiar with the whole thing, other than knowing that it had happened.
Yeah.
I wasn't even really sure exactly where it had happened, or what the extent was, but I certainly can bring it up at our next meeting and see what we could do as far as that's concerned. You know, most of my input comes from Ken, and he's taking that from wherever he gets his information, whether it be the state or whatever.
Yeah. I mean, it, just the process now is, they have to go through the complete building permit process, which brings in all kinds of new zoning to a 1900's house, you know? And I don't think that's fair when all it needs is a wall to be fixed.
And this is nothing similar to the schoolhouse? Where we changed the ordinance?
It's the same one, yeah.
I mean, it strikes me as...
Except for the fact it didn't take 50% of the value of the building down.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why it had to be moved.
That's where the schoolhouse fell into it. This one is nowhere near that.
Yeah. And, and this is a home. I mean, she's going to be 90 in September, and she's lived there all her life, so that's her home. So, I, just something to look at, because I'm not, you know, I'm not sure of all the particulars of what they're going to have to go through in order to get that fixed, but, and I know Kenny will work through it with them, but just to put, you know, another obstacle in the way when you have a situation like that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Back to 4.226, I'm going to make a motion that we do put the second article on and move forward with that, from recommendations from the Planning Board and the, and the attorney.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Full business, Jim Dorr.
Jim Dorr, just wanted, last week, we mentioned, we had a conversation with David, and I was going to check with our contractors that are doing the work. They are all set to do it. They're going to put the Jim Dorr in when they're done with this project. So, if you wouldn't mind, maybe David, sometime when you've got a truck in the area, you want to just bring it up here, and we'll set it inside the building?
Right down the equipment shed right now, locked up, so...
I don't have access to that, so if you could just bring it up sometime? Perfect. They'll do that when they finish up this project.
Okay. MMA Mac Action Plan, I saw that last week. I don't think, I mean, I heard what Dave said, and we're going to go out for bids and everything. I don't think we need to rush by saying we're going to absolutely do it in June, or July, or September, because they just gave us a year extension.
What are you talking about?
Isn't this about the shed?
Just the one thing, just, no, no, just the railing.
Oh, oh, I thought it was about the shed.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're thinking of the old sand and salt?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is...
That wasn't MMA 2?
It was. I have, I had the old shed a little further down under F.
Okay.
MMA, the action plan was just from the Fire Department. Remember, they, he came out a couple of months ago, and he had three little things he wanted done. Two of them have been done. The last thing is just making the railing and the new ambulance building. And Ed mentioned last week, speaking to the Fire Chief, to see if, again, we could possibly use these contractors that we have on site, just to go over and make that railing up to par. So that's what we were...
Yeah, it's not that expensive, right?
No, he's going to have to pay for it out of his budget one way or the other, so these guys are already right here on staff, and...
Well, I mean, they already meet all the insurance and workers comp.
Yep.
We'll just have them do that.
They said they're willing to do it, so I just got to get ahold of Dave and tell him, get it taken care of.
Okay, abandoned properties?
So, we announced last week that one of them's been settled, woo-hoo, and the other one is in court May 17th.
Okay.
Settled, cleaned up, purchased by a new owner, the whole nine yards.
That's great.
And we, yeah, and we got all the court fees, court and legal fees.
Foreclosure properties?
I'm waiting for, I know that Ed reached out to someone, I apologize, I don't recall who it was.
Southern Maine Communications to go take a look for the tower.
You guys were going to drive by that and see if it was a decent property, or if you wanted to start thinking about a tax sale.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for Southern Maine to get back to me on that, so, he was going to check it to see if it was worth even thinking about moving a tower to it, so...
What would it cost for a new tower, do you know?
Well, a new tower is probably in the $50,000, $60,000 range, but that's not going to be something the town would bear.
But we'll have to make sure we go through the process with the other big towns.
Oh, yeah, you gotta do, yeah, do all that, and, yeah, we'd go through it with the 12-town group, and all that. So it'd be, all we'd be is weed on the land instead of someone else, and they would lease it, they would lease it from us. Exactly.
But you don't have any concerns about, I heard some talk about it, not being able to get good enough reception up there?
That's, that's why I contacted Southern Maine Communications. They're the ones who maintain all the towers, all three of the tower sites for the fire communications, so...
And it's right near that barn that burned?
Mm-hmm.
Is it before it going up the hill, or?
I think it's just after it going up there.
Just after it?
It was a higher number than the, than the one that burned, so I think it's after it.
Okay.
So they're going to take a look at it, see if it's even a plausible idea, so...
Firefighter, paramedic?
So the ad ended last week for your firefighter, paramedic. We have three completed applications, and just wanted to know what the Board's instruction or direction from this point would be.
It closes Friday?
It closed last Friday.
Oh, last Friday?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll have to schedule a meeting, and...
Who would you like?
The Chief and the Assistant Chief, right?
Chief, Assistant Chief, and who else you going to put on the board?
Three of you. Is there any night of the week that works better? Do you want me to do it around their schedule, maybe after Selectmen's meeting or before? What's, what are you thinking?
Yeah, figure out when they're available. Well, the applicants, too, you know...
Well, I'm sure for the interview, they'll make themselves available.
And, and the Chief and the Assistant Chief, that'd be great. So we only got three, huh?
Yes.
And we're hiring one, right?
Correct.
Okay. And all met the requirements?
They all submitted the packet, the complete packet. They all submitted the packet, the complete packet, I did not go through them, it's not my place.
All right, now, I'm where I was talking, old San Sal building. Because they gave us a year extension, and we beat that year extension, I don't think we should give them a deadline. I liked the idea that was mentioned last, last week about using the maintenance fee and every, and doing it, and probably going out to bid to have it hauled off, is that what we were talking about? But I think we can put it, we can put the deadline out a little further, and give ourselves some time in case something happens, and you can't get the hauler, or you can't get any, I know you said it would only take you a couple hours to knock it down, but...
Oh, to get it down, but to haul it off and stuff's going to obviously take longer than that, but, no, I mean, it's two, it's three ways to do it. You know, we can knock it down, we can haul it off ourselves, which we do all the time doing houses, or we can have, typically, I have, like, Simpson, or anyone, or something like that, bring in a dumpster, load them up, they exchange them, that, you got that route there, or you can just get it down, if they're really worried about it, I mean, it's in a contained area, if that's their problem, but, I mean, myself, there's no danger right now, it's closed off, we still have some sand inside there we got to get out, you know, the, but the money that we have in that account right now, I think, would take care of, you know, getting rid of the building. There's not a lot there, it looks more than there is, it's just a shell, you know, so, so, I mean, I believe that we have enough money in there, and there's still payroll bill, and, you know, a couple little doodads that we have to do down there, but I, whenever you guys feel that we want to do it, we'll do it, you know?
Well, we have to wait till July first, but...
Yeah, you know, and, you know, we could, we could probably put a bid in on at least the disposal part, you know, Triano, or Blow Brothers, I use Simpson and Sanford, they're local, but we could put that out to bid at some point if we wanted to.
We should talk to Bob and find out what the cost is for Triano, because they're already a signed contractor with us, so we already, they were low bidder, so we can find out what Triano would charge us.
Yeah.
And then, and then have other people do it, but I don't know, what do you think, should we go out to contractors taking it down too, or, we already know that having the road commissioners use their own equipment is way cheaper than anybody else.
Yeah, they're not going to beat the price of these guys, I mean, as far as the containers go, that's, you know, hauling it off, we should go out to bid on that, but...
Yeah, it's going to be, it's probably going to be $7,000, $8,000, $9,000, in that range there, disposal fee, so obviously, we'll have to put that out to bid, so, but...
I can't imagine anybody would have a problem with using our road, our own road crews to do that.
We're just going to do it by the hour like we did last time.
Yeah, just like, just like we did on the building, the San Sal building.
So, but, I mean, I guess it all depends on whether MMA wants it done now, or whenever, you just give us the deadline, have it done, but...
Well, they wanted it done as soon as possible, because they still have liability insurance on it.
Well, when I, when I talked to Vance, he was fine with having the block across there, and as long as there was no access, he seemed...
Is the block, is it still blocked?
Yeah, I, we had to use the Jersey barrier, so I got two 40-foot culverts blocking out, they ain't getting through, nobody's getting through.
And I think, and I'm not sure how, how that came up, or where it came from, but I think that they were through, maybe possibly through our treasurer and through communications, it became unblocked for a while, so that might have been why we got that call, or that email.
Yeah, we had, we had to use the blocks to put up the little block building, and...
Right, but I'm just saying, I don't think she realized that.
Get it back right away.
And when a call came in about it, she answered the insurance.
It was only, it was only a couple days.
I'm just trying to tell you how it came about.
I know, I appreciate it. Other than that, you just give us a deadline, you know, we can, we can put it out to bid, whenever you, whenever you guys feel like it, I guess, and, yeah, other than that...
I don't see a sense in doing anything if we don't have to before July, we can't anyway.
Oh, no, there's, there's no money right now to do it in the account, so...
Yep.
So, tell them, tell them by tax time in October, we have it done, by October 15th.
Okay.
That sound okay?
Whenever you guys...
If they're asking for a date, if not...
We, we may just want to get, if, you know, be proactive, and maybe get the bids out early, you know, to some of these companies, and I don't believe there's anything else on here for me, so...
All right, so if we go out and do bids, and we tell them we're going to start right in July, as soon as they'll...
Yeah, no, all...
Be able to do it, your workload won't keep you from being able to...
Oh, no, we always fit it in, you know, it's like anything else in town, so, but, I mean, all we need is a disposal and hauling fee, that's, that's all we're going to need for, for price, so it should be pretty plain and simple, and I have a pretty good idea what they are already, because I do this all the time, so, you know, I have pretty good insight on whether or not the prices are already on, so...
Thanks a lot, Dave. All right, elections, training update?
Question about that?
Yeah, sure.
And maybe it's a simple question, I don't know, but is the road commissioners' insurances cover taking something like that down, as opposed to working on the roads?
Yeah, because they've been, you want to talk about that?
Yeah. The, to work for the town act, and you have to have your liability insurances, I carry, I think, $2 million worth of liability, I shouldn't advertise, I guess, but, yeah, and of course, the employees that work on site, their workman's comp, everything taken through the town, because they're town employees, so any piece of equipment that lands on site, or any subcontractor has to have liability, workman's comp, or a waiver from the state. So, we're well insured.
And Michelle makes sure that with every contractor, so the insurance wouldn't be any different than any contractor we hired off the street, so, but these guys are at a set rate because of the warrant article, so they're a lot cheaper than what the outside contractors charge us. All right, election training update?
So, last week, we announced that Secretary of State's office gave us a mandatory training, which I attended this morning in Sanford, although only three hours long, it was pumped full with a lot of information. One of the things that they're doing is, they're making changes to the AVS system for the voters that need assistance, you've all been in the voting hall, and you see the telephone, and the fax machine, and that whole setup over there, they've done away with that, and they're no longer going to need the telephone line, instead, they've given us all, it's called an express vote, and it basically looks like a really large iPad, and the votes are stored on a flash drive, and that flash drive eventually is going to plug into our DS-200, which is the machine that you put your ballots in now, so, a lot of information as far as how to use it, and the changes of the new one, so we kind of went through that, and we all got to bring our equipment home. One of the other changes that, that's kind of, I think, good to announce, that one of the big changes, a cost-saving measure from the state's office, that you're going to notice at primary time, is, if you recall, we've talked about write-in, write-in votes with the state, the state no longer accepts write-in candidates unless you file a write-in candidacy by a certain date. For the Secretary of State's office, that date for the state of Maine was April 15th, so there are no write-ins statewide, which, I'm sorry, for a clerk, it's always a blessing, but there are no declared write-ins statewide, so what that means is that if there are, if there is no one running for a particular party, if there's no one running for a particular race in a party, you're going to get different ballots. So, the Democratic ballot and the Republican ballot are going to look completely different from one another, because you may have a county commissioner for one, and if there's no county commissioner on the other one, they're not even printing the ballot. Urge you all to check your parties, Green Independent, for example, you know, we go through this every year, there's a difference between the Green Independent and an unenrolled independent voter like Angus King. The Green Independent has no one on their ballot, so you may come to the primaries, if you're registered to vote or to participate in the primaries, if you're a Green Independent, there's no ballot, I mean, you'll still get your local ballots, but, so, that was kind of interesting to see how the, you know, cost savings, to not have to print all of those ballots anymore, and really cut down. We are going to be using the DS-200 for the first time in June for our local elections, generally, we hand-count those, and we have, you know, we create the ballots in-house, we've done some cost comparisons, and we've decided that we're going to use the machine for all of it. So, you'll get your primary, you'll get your candidates, and you'll get your ROMAC Orchard. So, change is coming.
Library said something about voting training here at Town Hall, is that for these new ballots?
That has nothing to do with me, no.
No, okay.
That is ranked choice, full of the store.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and you don't see any, have any concerns about people using these for the first time?
Well, well, and it's funny, one of the clerks from Kennybunk, I think he's the clerk that's been there the longest for the group that was there, he's been a clerk for 40 years, he, he said, you know, this, this really looks fun, it looks, you know, it looks fun and it looks easy, it's really a big iPad, and you, you know, maneuver your way through it, the problem is, is that the state's only giving every town 50 ballots, so as fun as it's going to look, you know, we're still supposed to be focusing it towards, you know, voters with disabilities, I mean, we would never turn anyone away, but we don't want it to get to be so inviting, that, you know, the line's that long, they decide they just want to go in through that way, so, I mean, it's, it's a lot more user-friendly than the other one, so I think it'll be interesting, so...
What does Trump have to say about this?
No comment.
12-Town Group, you want me to read that letter?
Could we talk about, we skipped a couple things?
Oh, yoga.
Yoga. So, the, and I'll let Bill fill you in, but just to catch you up, as you know, that yoga asked if they could, if they could be here, and because they are for profit, the main municipal basically said, it wasn't advised unless we changed our policy. Something has come up since then, and Bill asked to put it on the agenda.
Well, first of all, the church agreed to let the yoga people, Sadborn, use the neighboring room on these Thursdays.
Because she did what? She's no longer...
Well, she, she restructured her, her business and everything.
So, she's a nonprofit, yeah?
And this is, this is a nonprofit, and there, there's not even going to be a bowl for donations or anything like that. There will be a church, which will then go to the camperships of the church, what do you call it?
Summer camp?
That's right.
Summer camp, it's a summer camp, yeah. So, everything was fine, until we discovered that they're going to do work on the town, on the...
Church.
On the church, on the, on the floor, there's a very serious structural problem for the floor.
Not a good place for yoga, huh?
No.
No, no. So, at any rate, what she's asking is, would it be possible to use the Town Hall here on several Thursdays, or the amount of time it takes for them to finish the reconstruction of the, of the church neighboring?
Planning board still meets downstairs?
Planning board meets downstairs, yeah.
Yeah, and the food pantry's in there, too.
We have the hall and the gym as well, the only, I went back and reread the, the email from legal, the only, only conflict that I saw, not from legal, but for, for the hall is, we did go ahead and schedule, when we talked about building maintenance and so forth, the floor being redone, remember, we talked about that, so there is one week that the entire hall will be closed for the buffing and, you know, the yearly maintenance of it, and that's in May, but the email clearly said it, as long as it was nonprofit.
Yeah.
And I will tell you that last week when she did it, I think, or two weeks ago, she did it for the first time, it happened to be around tax time, and I think that everyone went from yoga to my office, anyways, they, I mean, I saw some people out, some, you know, some of my older residents that just don't get out, I mean, they did chair yoga, you know, a couple of them, you know, that are, are bound to a walker, or they're bound to a wheelchair.
That's great.
I mean, it was amazing, I mean, off, you know, off record, I'll give you, tell you a couple of them, and you'll just be amazed that some of them, they just, it was the best thing ever for them.
That's great.
It was nice to see.
Glad it worked out.
So, the question is, would this be acceptable to the town?
To the board?
To the board.
She just has to fill out the paperwork, right?
Yeah.
Or did you say she's already done it here?
No, she hasn't done it here, no, I mean, we would make her exempt, like we do lions and owls, she's providing a nonprofit service, and she's got her own insurance to cover.
Sounds good.
Do you want to make a motion, we don't have any idea, Bill, time-wise, I mean, how many...
Well, she'll have to come up and fill the paperwork, right?
It's, the best guess is about four weeks, but, you know, nobody's guaranteeing anything as much, you know, it's hard. There is a big, they installed a big dehumidifier already under there, underneath the church, workspace and everything down there, and it's, it's bringing the humidity level down, but it's, has to be corrected, the beams and everything are, have to be replaced, it's a big problem, but four weeks is what, it's about what people are saying it's going to take, and there's people that are saying, oh, I can do this in two weeks, and there's other people that said, oh, it'll take two months, so it's somewhere in between, and probably four weeks.
Great.
Probably before Thursday.
Do we need a motion on it?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we allow the yoga instruction, instructing on nonprofit to happen here at the Town Hall as a, on as-needed basis that she needs?
Yeah, no charge.
Yeah, no charge.
No charge, yes.
Hold on, favor?
So, you send her in to see me, Bill, and we'll get her going on the paperwork?
Yeah, right.
All right, meetings versus workshops?
I'm sure I had a word in.
Hmm, that's good. I talked to Jennifer, several of the department heads, well, actually, two, came up and said that they missed the opportunity to sit down in a workshop meeting, or a planning meeting, to discuss things, and then also, the ability to talk to us alone on certain things, but of course, we have the executive session that'll cover the one issue. But, I'm thinking, because, well, actually, between now and June, we'll probably be pretty busy on Tuesday night, I'm thinking a couple hours a week, because the fire department is creating all kinds of new policies, and everything has changed now that they're a town department, they have to, we, the selectmen still have to do first reading, second reading, and sign the policies, and they're also talking about probably an ordinance to work on the sprinkler systems for the liquor license, the town ordinance, because we don't really have one, so, I mean, that's the kind of thing where we can sit down and talk about it, and work it out, and plan it, and, you know, continue on to the next meeting, and not be in a selectmen's meeting, so it'd just be the staff, and, I mean, the department heads and the selectmen would talk, the audience is welcome to come, and it would be videotaped, but I just want to throw that out there, because that's what they've asked for.
I don't see where it's any different than a selectmen's meeting, I mean, you can have people come and sit down on the meeting, you can have, it's going to be taped, so it's going to be aired, and...
It's because we have an agenda, and we have to get through it, like tonight, we have to get through it by 6:00, if it's set up as a workshop, we can go as long as it takes, and they've got a lot of stuff that we're going to have to go through, from what they're saying, so, and, you know, they're not going to be able to use those policies or enforce those policies unless we do that, unless we have a first reading, second reading, and sign them, and give them back to them, and it goes into our policy book too, and then goes on the website, so there is a big difference now. So, just throwing it out there, and we can talk about, talk to your groups that you're liaison to, and then we can talk about it again.
Okay.
Take that up, Mr. Meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Willie's application, just, oh, he's first week in May, too, right?
Yeah, interesting enough, he put 6/4 of 16, so I didn't, I just, literally just got this a couple hours ago, so I guess I'm just looking for your instruction to do our usual background checks and so forth, do you want to look at scheduling a public hearing?
As soon as you get the background check come back.
So, do that first, and put it on the agenda for next week with the results of the background hearing, a background check.
That's, next week, actually, he's going to go over again.
See, this says June, that's what I'm saying, though, he says that his present license expires June 4th, he says it's not, according to this, it's not May, it's June.
Oh, did we do it later, because he hadn't finished the sprinkler system, we had to wait for the federal, so he ran on the old one, so, yeah, I think it's probably what happened. He hadn't finished the sprinkler system in time, so we, we refused to give it to him.
But it doesn't revert back to the original date?
It depends on how the paperwork was filled out and how we signed it, but...